Good to go.
Are we up and running?
Yeah.
Okay, let's begin. Good evening. Thank you all coming out. We're gonna have a pledge allegiance, and then we'll have a moment to sign on the score. Dorothy H. Engracia, who was administrative assistant to the former Town of Walker supervisor, Dennis Crosswell. And she was also the elected receiver of taxes over 24 years, as well as the lovely mother to our town clerk Luisa Engracia and DBW commissioner Lewin Grasse Jr. We also want to have a moment to remember the victims of the Oakland Monterey Park California shootings, the victims of the Half Moon Bay California shooting. Want to let our Asian community know that we do stand with them in remembering these victims. Hold on. The thing's not working. The camera's not working. Hold on. Sorry about that. Gotta mute that too. Camera's not working. That's us. So. George is not working. No. Hold on one second. I got that working. It's on mute. I'm trying to get the mute one on. Yeah. Good? Yep. Do you need me to repeat everything or? No. Alright. United States of America, we are a republic for which we stand. Welcome. Good evening. As you can see, we have some presentations tonight. Thank everyone for coming out here. First, we're gonna start recognition of Chinese New Year, the Year of the Rabbit. As people with rabbit sign let go of old things, and also a good time to try new things. Rabbits have extra luck and opportunity. The water, rabbit year. With that, we're gonna recognize, we're gonna come up, and recognize Louis and Francine Wong. They have both been the owner of Yu Yu Chinese Restaurant at Go Go here in the Town of Walker. Louis is a former member of the Town of Walker Hollywood Committee, and their son Colin played in the Town of Walker Little League. So we're gonna step up and recognize. Anyone who has been around Town of Walker for years know that the restaurants that Louis owns has always been good. And we felt as a board that we need to recognize our small businesses as something that we started last year. And it's always good to see small businesses grow and stay in business, even during the rough times that we had over the last few years. Stay down Eric. Thanks. Everyone, every morning gets a chance to listen to this DJ. I have you up speaking to her coming down over the last year and a half. And War Radio, War Radio's been there for 80 years. They have been fantastic. And we also have another afternoon DJ, Michelle Taylor, who's here today along with the owners. Bud and Julie Williamson, please come up.
I will say from the words, it's been a pleasure, 80 years. It's great to be a part of this community. It's been here for 25 years. It's great to do local radio. It's great to see local business survive, especially in this township where it does rely on big businesses as well. So thank you for supporting our radio station. Our local staff, Kate Brandon, and Michelle Taylor. And the wife Julie, Jim Fry couldn't make it. And we don't know where Jimmy has his. Thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize another small business that's been in the community over 29 years. The owners Russell and True Johnson, who have owned the Shaw Stop Convenience Store for all those years and service community. Please come up. Now, next, we're gonna recognize, I was gonna say, Middletown Youth Football D1. This is Middletown. This year, in 2022, Middletown Football had two divisions. D1, age 8 to 9, and D2, which is 10 to 11. Called the Mighty Mites. This is the first year Middletown Youth practiced and play a playoff game on the new field, which is up by, I think, 17M. Like a red, brand new field. They made it against, made it to the Super Bowl where they play against Valley Central, who was undefeated. And our young men won the game undefeated. Anyone who's been involved in football, no, that's a big honor. You know, taking the team all the way to the Super Bowl and winning it all. So we're gonna have the head coach, Mo Lewis, step up. My previous assistants, they are here. David Allen, Curtis Warrior, and Steven Smith. Turn everybody, the young men up, and we're gonna get on this. Great job.
As you mentioned, Mo Lewis, one of the coaches that helped out this year with the kids. With this being said, D1, the 8 and 9 year olds, a lot of the kids never played sports a day before their life. It's the first year that they actually play a sport. And coming together as a team, they went undefeated all the way to the Super Bowl and then brought home the big award for that as well. So it was a pleasure to work with these kids this year. Looking forward to it next year and throughout the years to come. As they get older, this is where it starts for them, at the youth age. Get to high school, then it's more fun for us to go to the ball games and stuff to see that. So it's always fun for us adults as well. But it's just a pleasure to be a part of their lives and keeping them on the right track and doing good sports and everything. A lot of them are in Walker, so we do appreciate Walker for doing this for them as well. Even though it's a little kind of league, a little town. We appreciate you guys going through the big school. Cool for a second.
First up, we're gonna have Tony Lewis.
Oh, this is part of his little brother. He's a little part of the group. He was on sports day, but he didn't get to play on the team, but he was out there practicing everything and then every game. So this is wrong. Well, this one goes out to the 40 world. He's not here today. Oh, sorry. I sent this more to get it to him as well. Elijah Brown, are you here? Elijah Brown's not here. Ethan. Goodbye. Who you at, bud? Can you make it with us today? Gianni Lawrence. Dona Batista, what's he gonna make for today? Liam. Mason, he's not here. Matthew DeGroot. Owen couldn't make it tonight. Let's see. Owen Stewart. Raymond Gray. Teal Rowan, he couldn't make it here tonight. Suprow's not here tonight. True Myers is not here tonight. Azender. Oh, head coach Maurice Lewis.
I do have something to say. Can we give a hand to the parents who was out there late nights, always putting their hands on their kids? They're not the fortunate youth for a lot, a lot of years. And one thing about these seven families is that they entrusted us with their children, their income, and tried to bet on what their hands and their shoulders, they gave us all the support that we needed. Thank you so much.
Sign them up. Sign them up. You've got grandkids, little ones, these, sign them up. They got cheerleaders this year and everything, so.
It's always great to see this, recognizing these young men because they are our future. And if they work hard, you recognize them. They see that hard work does bring its rewards. Autistic Dance Connection was supposed to be here. Not sure what they act, so we'll come back to them if they show up and we'll continue our meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, you want to give the parents an opportunity to leave if they want to?
We're about to start our meeting. The parents want to leave. I know it's a school night. It's okay. You don't have to stay. We're going to do some town business. But you're welcome to stay if you want to. You're very welcome. The great work. Not just winning, but teaching these young men. I love it. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a historic moment from Tom Goswery. I'm a historian. Come on, Tom.
Hi, everybody. I'm a, I'm not really, I'm one, I'm a historian. And I'd just like to comment on the presentation. I've known WL since 1846. And by the way, the football field is up on 217 West, that's 17M. So they could get oriented.
Thank you.
Manhattan Avenue. I'm involved with the town's history department, and we do provide monthly meetings. However, we're not gonna have our February, January meeting because of proposed problems with the weather. And we'll have a chance to reorganize. But looking back in history, now Neil, you'll appreciate this. I'm looking back in history only four weeks. To make up for the last half word meeting that was suspended, partly suspended due to the weather. So for the time then, it was Christmas, of course. And looking back in history, we had no meeting due to the storm. But based on that, a child asked Santa Claus, how did the reindeer get their name? Santa replied, I named them after memories like Prancer frolicking through the snow. What about Donner? The child asked, a shadow settled over Santa's face. And after a moment, Santa began, in the winter of 1846, and we're going back a little more than four weeks now, until 1847, snowball had trapped us in the Sierra Nevada Mountains, Donner's Pass, which you may remember in history was a severe snowstorm. About 100 people, 50 died in the, in the snow and 50 survived. Now, just as an aside, the name Prancer is from the German word for a very active horse. And the name Donner is the German word for thunder. Now, in the next item, why did Santa visit his doctor before the holidays? He always got a flu shot before he signed Santa. Sorry for that. And just one other thing, now looking ahead, we're gonna look ahead into this crystal ball. Well, we're only looking ahead one week. And which when we have Groundhog Day, although it's not really recognized here, but it's recognized in Punxsutawney. And I used to visit my uncle's hog farm out there in Punxsutawney. So I personally knew Punxsutawney Bill. And by the way, in Espanol, the word for pig in Guatemala, it's arch. Just as an aside, that's the thing. And just to let you know, the town of Punxsutawney, PA was originally settled and inhabited by the Leni Leni Indians, the original type of people. And for thousands of years, the Leni also lived in this area. Getting back in history. The town's name was derived from the traditional name, Tensu Tenink, meaning the town of Ponx. Ponx meaning a sand fly, and that applies all along. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Next, we've got public participation on agenda items only. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? No. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, next, we have correspondence. I happen to have one. Mercedes, the deputy town clerk is sitting in for Luisa. Do you have any correspondence? Because I have one. Okay, I have one that was given to us from the office of the Orange County District Attorney. It says, George ran a supervisor to Town of Walker and closes a check for $5,000 to be used for body cam camera technology. This money must be used only for this endeavor. Thank you all my best, BA Hooper. This was given to us on December 27, 2022.
Mr. Supervisor? Take the artistic dance poster here.
Just going back to the beginning of our recognition, artistic dance connection just walked in. I wanted them to do a dance. But their new business in the Town of Walker, and everyone who's known that, the Holiday Ray, I refer to them as Town of Walker Rocketts. They did a fantastic show at the Holiday Ray. So we're going to honor them. Caroline and Alyssa, please step up. Come on up. Two businesses in town who are already having an impact in our community. They did a fantastic job. Don't be nervous. Don't be nervous. It was our world. We happy to be here. So. So we're gonna have you come in. The all the young ladies who had better announce their names than I am. So if you want to come up.
Okay. All right, perfect. All right, we're starting with Sarah Delmar.
Next, we have Haley Donovan. We have Gianna Gallo. We have Felica Gonzalez. Olivia Hay. Elise Maldenato. Nina Manalis. Olivia Miseria. Jira McVey. Aki Smorton. Reagan Oswald. Gianna Chiapo. And Ashlyn West. They're just not able to attend today. We have one for Ava Strumiallo and for Gigi Praglia.
It's not the game. We got it. Coaches, Caroline and Alyssa. Try to sit in lines.
Okay.
Fatah Selah.
Fatah Redon.
And Caroline, I want to try this. Hannah, oh, Hannah.
Oker.
Oker. And thank you.
Colin. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they just can't pull that.
I can't say it from class. Or majors. Or majors.
Here you go.
Okay. Mercedes. You're up.
First is an order scheduling, public hearing petition to extend water district number one.
Now therefore, we saw that the twenty-third day of February twenty-fourth at seven twelve o'clock on Saturday, the town board will need and for its public hearing to consider the extension of the facilities we need in the Walker Consolidated Water District. Including the environmental significance zero and to view all persons interested in the subject therefore. And for such orders, all other for action or the part of the town board in connection with the matter as they be appropriate and be further orders that the town board does hereby assume a status in connection with the review of the petition. Seeking to extend the Walker Consolidated Water District filed by the petitioner and be it further order that the town board is hereby directed to publish a certified copy of this order at least once in the official newspaper of the town, not less than ten or more than twenty days before the date of the hearing and be it further order, the town board is hereby directed to force a certified copy of this order to be posted from the time of the town, not less than ten or more than twenty days before the date of the hearing. Motion by
So move. Second.
Senator Coin.
Yes.
Senator Martin.
Yes.
Senator Meyer.
Yes.
Senator Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Terran.
Yes.
The resolution of the town board of the town of Walker authorizing the supervisor to accept proposal for the Rastasti well field expansion project. Now therefore, there it be hereby resolved. At the recommendation of Kitting Arrow and Dush Consulting Engineers, the town board hereby authorizes and directs to tunnel walker supervisor or he basically would accept the proposal for the Rastasti well field expansion project. From name, Kristen Sun company will be a man of one billion, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty. Resolve that the town supervisor or his basically hereby authorized to execute any and all documents with respect to acceptance of said deal. Subject to the approval of the town attorney, this progress will be funded through the project budget line H R seven eight three one zero dot four six one six.
So move. Second.
For second. Mister.
Councilman Coin.
Uh, Mr. Coin.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Terran.
Yes.
Resolution of the town board of the town of Walker declared itself a lead agency for C P R. Purposes with respect to the proposed construction of a dial-a-butt vehicle storage facility and issued a negative declaration finding no environmental significance or adverse impact in accordance to C P R. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved as follows. One, in accordance with the provision of section six one seven point six of the regulation implementing the New York State Environmental Quality Impact C P R. The C P R regulations, the town board hereby determines that the aforementioned proposed project is an action subject to C P R regulation. And second, that the town board formally classifies the aforementioned action as unlisted pursuant to section six one seven point four of the C P R regulation. And third, the town board determined that it is a lead agency in respect of the consideration review on determination of significance of the proposed action pursuant to C P R regulation. And four, the town board hereby certified, it has applied with the requirement of part six one seven of the C P R regulation. The town board hereby finds that the proposed project will have no significant adverse environmental impacts and issues a negative declaration to the same, we set, led into declaration to be reviewed and approved by the town engineers. And six, the town board is hereby directed to publish town board's negative declaration for the proposed action in the environmental quality over the permanent environmental preservation as required.
So move. Second.
Mr. Coin.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Terran.
Yes.
Resolution of the town board of the town of Walker appointed persons to the position of full-time police dispatcher. Now therefore, it hereby resolve that the town board of the town of Walker hereby appoints facing the issue, I want to hook you to the decision of full-time dispatchers to serve in tech capacity at the town of Walker Police Department. The appointment shall be effective as of January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the work start date of February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Provided that first, all background checks are satisfactorily completed and second, all applicable documentation is ready and accepted by the Orange County Department of Energy Storage, they will send the department.
So move. Second.
Mr. Coin.
Yes.
Valentin.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Terran.
Yes.
The solution of the town board of the town of Walker appointed persons to position of part-time police dispatchers. Now therefore, being hereby resolved that the town board of the town of Walker hereby appoints Alexis Barber, Sila Fabiano, and Eric Hunter to the positions of part-time dispatchers to serve in set capacity in the town of Walker Police Department. Effective February sixth, twenty twenty-three, provided that first, all background checks are satisfactorily completed and second, all applicable documentation is immediately accepted by the Orange County Department of Resource and Resource Department. Motion.
So move. Second.
Mr. Coin.
Yes.
Mr. Valentin.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Terran.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, um.
We adding the other resolution?
Yes, oh. You didn't get a copy?
Uh, we have it.
Oh, okay. Okay. So this one that was the resolution. We had to table. And um, you were able to get the due diligence to try to get this going. As the town needed some help. And um, thank you to Councilman Valentin, who took his time to work to get information that we needed in order to get this done. Um, this is exactly what good bipartisan is in the town. When someone helps to move town forward. So um, he did it. Um, we got the information we needed and it is dearly that we have to do this resolution.
Resolution of the town board of the town of Walker authorizing the town supervisor to execute the consultant position human resources service to provide professional consulting services to the town of Walker Personnel Department. Whereas in accordance with the council, performing policies as set forth in Town Code Chapter forty-three, we respect professional services. The town board contacted not less than three potential vendors and determined that based on the nature of the services, immediately union coupled with current staff in the human resources department, which has created emerging need for self-controlled services without delay. Position human resources service, L S C, fulfills the qualifications for the consultant position. And in town board believe, it is the best interest of the town to engage tech companies on a temporary basis. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the town board of the town of Walker hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute an agreement with the positions human resources service L S C in the form of next year to provide professional consulting services and human resources department, having made of twenty-five dollars per town employee for a maximum cost of four thousand, two hundred and sixty per month with the town board to be periodic reports with respect to the service provided by self-controlled services.
So move. Second.
Senator Coin.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
I disagree that three bids were received. I'm gonna vote now.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Terran.
Yes.
All we have down here.
All right, thank you. Next, we gotta go with our councilman comments, committee reports. We're gonna start with Councilman Coin.
Okay, I'll start with Highway. Uh, believe it or not, temperatures being below freezing, the highway department has been able to take advantage of that this last month and catch up on uh, doing some ditching along the roads. Uh, repairing some catch basins and actually removing trees and patching potholes. Um, I have the list for, the paving list for twenty twenty-three. So it's quite lengthy and let me just get through this. These roads are definitely going to be paved. Ballard Road from Crystal Run Road to two eleven. Crowdy Road from Ocean Turnpike to Crystal Run Road. Crane Road, thank God, along with the rear loop. Uh, the lane Schmidt Road, Schwangunk Road, both east and west. Tarbell Road, the dead end side. Arnott Lane, Fairlawn Avenue and Godwin Road. Now here's where it gets a little tricky. Uh, the cost of blacktop is going to go up. We had not received word on how much. Okay? If we can work it in and it doesn't balloon and, and you know, I, I have no way of telling you sitting up here tonight, but these are the following roads that we would like to pave. So if it's within the budget, uh, Maples Road from Seventeen M to Mud Mills Road. Silver Lake Scottstown Road, Tower Drive to George's Road. Motel Road, Dogwood Crossing. Urance Lane, Elm Street, Church Street, Dudley Lane and McGinn Road. So there's an awful lot there. Maybe we get half of it done. Maybe we get it all done. Maybe we get two roads. I, I don't know, but you know, more information to follow as far as that goes. But this is something interesting. Um, we'll be trying a new product. It's called Black Ice Rejuvenator. This product will rejuvenate a newly paved road that was paved within the last three to five years. And should add another five to seven years to the pavement. We'll be trying it uh, on the following roads this year. Weathervein Way, Twin Wells Court, Avenues A through F and Bel- Bel Vernon Avenue. So hopefully that'll be a cost savings. We'll try it out this year, see how that works and take it from there in the, in the years to come. Um, moving on to Veterans Affairs, so post eleven eighty-one's having pancake, their annual pancake breakfast. March nineteenth, that's a Sunday. Details to follow. I know that uh, every year this thing gets bigger and better. As far as not just attendance, but the menu. I've been to a hundred pancake breakfast and I mean, you don't have the, the options like post eleven eighty-one puts out, so I'll look forward, I look forward to getting that information and I'll, I'll pass that along in February's meeting. Um, also the bid went out for the remaining twelve pieces of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall over by Matty Steinert. As you guys all know that uh, they're not all real granite. Uh, three pieces are three pieces were a little delayed. They should have been here by now, but uh, they're a little delayed and, and we expect them, you know, shortly and we'll end up putting them in in the early spring. We'll have a dedication ceremony, so I'll announce that when we have that scheduled as well. Uh, but the bid went out. And thank you to Senator Stupus again and Assemblywoman Gunther, who gave us huge amounts of money to get this done and, and I hope the bids come in. You know, under that number so that we're able to complete it, but uh, the bids are due back by uh, what is it? Tuesday, by Tuesday, the thirty-first, so stay tuned for information on that. And that's all I have to Veterans Affairs. Moving on to assessors' office. Please be aware that the town data collector is actively underway with inspections of properties with building permits, C O's, recent sales, property reviews and court cases. Properties are being evaluated for the twenty-three tentative assessment roll. Assessment inspections are separate from the building department. Any informational door hanger. Not any. And an informational door hanger will be left at your property if we visit and cannot have access. All annual renewal exemptions are due in the assessor's office by Tuesday, March first, twenty twenty-three. Veterans aged agriculture, not-for-profit, commercial and disability exemptions applications are available in the assessment department. An informational mailer is being mailed out per Governor local which requires municipalities where real property tax exemptions exist to notify senior citizens that they may be eligible for such exemption via second notice. All mailers were sent out to residential taxpayers. If you are a senior, you may not, you may be eligible for low income senior exemption. Contact the assessor's office. Will we get three more? Reminder to new homeowners to register for the star credit check by contacting the Department of Tax and Finance. Five one eight four five seven two zero three six. This check program is not offered through your local assessor's office. For basic star exemption recipients who are turning sixty-five years of age in twenty twenty-three. Contact the assessor's office before March first to file for the enhanced exemption. This exemption only applies to your school tax bill. And as always, if you have any questions, please contact the assessment team during town hall business hours, six nine two seventy-eight ten. Uh, move on to my comments. I just want to send my condolences to the entire Grassy clan. Uh, Dottie was the matriarch and you know, it's, it's tough losing a family member. Um, you know, I, I've lost both my parents and we all experience it, right? It's, it's, it's really tough. So keep them in your prayers. You're going through some tough times right now. Um, I want to bring up the, the comments that the coach made tonight. About how he he coaches the kids and the parents stayed out of his way. And I've always been a fan of youth sports. Anybody knows me, my, you know, history with the Little League and such. You know, I've said it for years, it teaches kids how to win, how to lose. Right? Cause both are important and you're gonna experience both in your life. And, and it, it's again, talked about how hard, how hard these kids worked and, and, and how, you know, there was, there was a reward at the end. George, he actually brought that up. again, talked about how hard, how hard these kids worked and, and, and how, you know, there was, there was a reward at the end, George, he actually brought that up. And it's so true. And that's with anything in life, so, you know. And it was great to hear that the parents didn't get involved because, wow. Anybody who's coached Little League or any, any sport, am I right? No, I mean, God. You know, that's the toughest part is dealing with the parents, so kudos to them. And last thing, you know, we did have this this issue, we've had, we've had a handful of issues. People moving on to bigger, better things or what have you, and, you know, I just wanna point out, Eric, you know, I know you're the personnel guy, but you really had your hands full this last year and, you know, came through with flying colors. You know, everything real quick. And caliber of individuals that we brought to the board are, are fantastic, sorry, I just wanted to say that publicly and, and thank you publicly. You've done a fantastic job. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Coin, Councilman Jonathan.
Wow, thank you, appreciate the comments. I'll start with the police report. Our staffing currently is forty-nine full-time sworn police officers. I'm gonna ask the chief to touch on, we do have new police officers in the academy, so that number will increase, but I'll let him speak on that. Our arrest record data indicates that we're down to four point nine percent. That's nine hundred and one arrests versus in twenty-twenty-two, nine forty-eight for twenty-twenty-one. Our last community, police community, our next police community council meeting will be scheduled at the Community Center at seven P M on February second. And our Police Youth Coalition on December twentieth, our Police Youth Coalition hosted a well-attended holiday party. And our next meeting will be at seven P M on Tuesday, February twenty-first at the Community Center. One of the things I wanna mention is when you go to these events with the youth coalition, not only do the kids show up, the parents show up, and Rosie does a tremendous job in acknowledging and encouraging everybody to get engaged and get involved, and hopefully they stay with the program. Since we started the program, Chief, I, I think you brought the program to us, it, it was something that you had in the city, but the premise was to get kids involved with something outside the normal activity. And then we have kids meeting the police officers and kids talking to the police officers. And that gives them a different perspective. It's not just a police officer driving by and arresting someone. And it's actually worked out, they've had games, softball game, basketball game with police officers. I see Brian Davis here from our community council, and I think these volunteers do a tremendous job for the community, a tremendous job with the kids and, and showing them a different perspective in life. Just a reminder to everyone, parking facility snow removal beginning, it begins October first and continues through April first. Vehicles not permitted to park on public roads from twelve midnight to six A M when more than two inches of snow accumulates. Hopefully we haven't had that, at least this week. So on December sixteenth, the Police Department announced the arrest of Gianni Sellers and charging him with the June second murder of a three-year-old Xavier Johnson. We wanna thank all the agencies that assisted our police, including the Orange County District Attorney's Office, State Police, FBI, and the Orange County Sheriff's Office. On December, Shop With The Cop, on December twenty-second, officers from our Police Department partnered with Walmart during a Shop With The Cop event at the Walmart on Two-Eleven. The event went well and everyone the event was supported by our Police Community Council, our Police Youth Coalition, and our supervisor. Cookies With The Cop, with cops, on December ninth, Police Officer Roberto and S R O, S R O, the S R O at the Maple Hill Elementary School and other officers from our department hosted a successful Cookies With Cops event at school. It was a good time and the kids really enjoyed interacting with the police officers at that level. Anti-bullying event on December sixteenth, Police Officer Mills, which is the S R O officer at Mon Hagan Middle School, presented a school anti-bullying campaign. For our parks, during their off-season, they, they run around doing all kinds of maintenance and cleanups throughout the town. Apparently they're shampooing the carpet in Building B and we're working on carpets in Building A. They've started spackling and painting in the golf course clubhouse, working in the round room hallway grill room areas along with some woodwork in the grill room area. They've removed twenty-five dead trees at Corn Campground and Ten Trees at Circle Road Park. And they started dead tree removals at the golf course, which have approximately forty-five dead trees to take down. They continue their winter service of all the parks' maintenance equipment, and they have they, they're part of the snow removal and ice events throughout the town. As far as my comments, as Councilman Coin stated, my condolences, thoughts and prayers to Louisa and Lou and their entire family on their tremendous, tremendous loss of their mother. You, words, obviously, we, we, we send our condolences and our sympathies and words don't take away the pain and everything, it's just time and you know, thoughts and prayers to them and, and that God gives them the strength to carry on and, and keep their mother and keep their hearts and thoughts. I mentioned the roads and just have one question I'm following up on. There was drainage work that was done a few years ago, we're project on what was it, Lock Loman, Ben Loman, uh, roads, and so we're looking, I'm looking to follow because those roads were supposed to be paved after that project, so I will be meeting with Councilman Coin and, and the Highway Department to see what the status is on that and see if we can get that on the schedule to get paved as well. That's all, thank you.
Next, Councilman Meyer.
Thank you, Supervisor. Um, I wanna reserve my comments out of respect for the Ingracias, I love them. This past week, the town suffered an immense loss with the passing of Dottie Ingracia. Over the past few weeks, however, the past few years, I've gotten to knowing the Ingracias and consider them friends. Although I did not know Dottie well, I could tell what an amazing woman she was because of the character and makeup of her children that she raised. At the time when volunteerism is within one's own community is at an all-time low, you can always count on the Ingracias, each one of them, to step up and volunteer in a time of need. Their commitment to our community and to our neighbors is really inspiring and an example for all of us to follow. I also loved the way she referred to me as her councilman. Louisa told me a story about a woman from hospice who came to take care of her mother on the vital hours. I'm generally not one to ever get spiritual, but I believe it's worth mentioning. The healthcare worker from hospice knew the Ingracia family as she went to school with one of Louisa's cousins. She had fond words about her experience and interaction and how it impacted her work and career. She spoke of how honored she was to help during this hour of need given all she has been given by the Ingracia family, and Louisa never even knew. Although Dottie is gone, her impact and the impact of the entire Ingracia family lives on in the lives they have touched throughout our community. Through their work, through their volunteerism, and through their friendship. The legacy Dottie left behind can be seen every day in her siblings, her children, and her grandchildren. Each day they strive to make the world, we live in a better place, through their good deeds, their positive interactions with others, the respect they have and show for their neighbors, and their close-knit family ties. Although we are a town in mourning, we should all take a moment and celebrate the life of Dottie and honor and remember her. That every person you interact with, no matter how inconsequential it may feel at the time, do your best to leave a positive impression, as the seed you plant today will grow into beautiful flowers tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for those nice words, beautiful. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Supervisor. We start with the building department, so for the month of December, a hundred and seven permits, a hundred and seventeen certificates issued. Total piece collected were seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. They addressed twenty-two complaints and carried out eight hundred and twenty-nine inspections. Since it is January, I have an annual report for twenty-twenty-two as well. There was a total of two thousand two hundred and eight permits issued throughout the year. Certificates were a thousand and forty, total piece collected were one million two hundred, one million two hundred and forty thousand dollars, addressed five hundred and ninety-eight complaints and eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five inspections. And they would just like to note that the total piece collected were including municipal searches as well. The Sewer and Water Department, again, another busy month. There was five water main breaks that needed to be repaired, one water, one, five service leaks and one water main break need to be repaired. They do have a valve that's leaking on Bummel Road. Repair is scheduled for next week, so there'll probably be some road lane closures, so, you know, please be aware of that. And as always, the department does an amazing job of repairs like that, so big thank you to the residents for their understanding when they don't have water. The bids are in for the Rakowski Well Field Expansion Project, they were open and awarded. This is a much-needed project that we need to move forward with and hopefully we'll be doing so in the spring. There'll be several new production wells, buy additional water supply to help satisfy our high demand wants. And the department continues to work with the town's engineers and the health department to address the trihalomethanes and haliocetic acid issues. Various corrective measures have been designed and implemented, but this is an ongoing process and they continue to address it daily. The wastewater treatment plant project has been long-awaited, you've heard me probably mention multiple times, is actually, for the most part, underway, they had their pre-construction meeting. So that's a project that can't wait to be rolled fast enough. The Western Avenue Pump Station, bids were open and awarded, and that project should hopefully be under the way for the spring as well. And again, there probably will be some delays, both these projects with the supply chain issues that the world is facing. But we're very excited to move forward with them at this time. And as always, the operation maintenance of the water and wastewater treatment plant continues on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, around sixty-five days a year, so great job to all those guys to take care of that. We have the assessor's office. Not the assessor, no, not the assessor, I'm sorry, the county department. Yeah. I'll see if I can find the backflip, but for my comments, you know, after Councilman Myers' very moving statements, I just have to say that you know, certainly the Ingrassy family, my condolences and thoughts and prayers, Lou and Louisa lost their mother, who again was not just, you know, special to them, but to a lot of people within the town, you know, from her service here, her husband's service here, children's service here. They've done a lot, and although I didn't really know her well, I have to say at the two fifty parade, she was a grand marshal and I got to talk to her. Even though she was sitting down the whole time, she looked like she was ten feet tall, so you know, I think that was fortunate, it was really nice that we were able to celebrate her that way in that parade this summer, so you know, I hope that's, that's a memory that everybody can have and take with them. Congratulations to our full-time dispatchers, Mason Delicio and Walter Pachuki, Pochuki. We also have the part timers Alexis Barber, Skylar Fabiano, and Eric Hunter. And I just have to give a shout out to Applebee's. On Sunday, they had a pancake breakfast fundraiser for one of our school districts, Odyssey Mine Teams. If you don't really know about Odyssey Mine, it's a competition, basically, there's a local competition that happens. And should a team succeed in that, then it'll go to a state competition and a world competition. And the district's very rarely fund travel to the state and the worlds, you know, which can be in any of the states in the country. So they have to fundraise, and on Sunday, the twenty-second, from eight to ten, the restaurant opened its doors, they prepared all the food, provided the materials for quite a large crowd for pancake breakfast. And the O M teams sold the tickets, they took care of the hosting, serving, the cleaning up. So they had their hands in it, it was, it was pretty awesome, so I just, I just wanna give a shout out to Applebee's, I think, you know, when you you think about community and things like that, you know, here's a company that's here and open on a Sunday morning to take care of local kids who, you know, need money to, to go on with their studies at school, so I just wanna give a shout out to them. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Johnson?
First, I believe, once and then all, made a remark to the Ingracia family, not just the Tom Clark and Health Commissioner or the loss of the town, and I wanna give my condolences to the Ingracia family. And to, just like Councilman Johnson stated, at the two fifty, she was sitting there. I, I just know that she was loving every second of it, and well deserved honor, so my condolences to the family. Congratulations to our full-time dispatchers and our part-time dispatchers that are kinda coming on. Mason, Walter, good job, and looking forward for you guys to be there. Every time I walk down there, you're always there, I always tell you, you ever go home, you're always there, but thank you. And congratulations to all the honorees today. It's important, like I stated earlier, that we, as adults, especially the youth, we recognize them, they are our future and if they weren't called, they have to be recognized, and I think that's important. It's important for us as, not just as adults, but also officials to recognize the hard work that they do. Last week, weekend, I had coffee with the supervisor. We're gonna have it again in February and in March. And a setting like this is always nice to be taught, but I feel that, you know, having a one-on-one with myself and people feel a little bit more comfortable, and we had a number of people come out to talk to me about different issues and about the town, so I'm looking forward to doing it again in February. Last month, we were supposed to have a quanta celebration on December twenty-third due to the weather we had to cancel, so we moved it to December thirtieth at the Community Center. It was a fantastic, fantastic event. People showed up, the talent, the youth talent that we have in this town in our community, it's unbelievable. If anyone got a chance to see it, it was really, really good, young lady with a violin, that was astounding. Young man and who, it was funny because he forgot his drumsticks. He forgot his drumsticks and he had to play the drums. And with the knowledge of one of our own, Herb Dolson, was able to get him to the school drivers and he was able to play the drums. Never missed a beat, it was great, so we're looking forward to doing it again next year, so we're forward to that. We'll show the police, okay, chief is gonna talk about it, but this year we're going to expand our Police Junior Academy. I believe we did it three weeks and we're gonna expand it to four weeks. Great turnout. I'm pretty sure we're gonna have repeaters, so be on the lookout for information on that. Our police officers do a great job. Wanna give the PD a great shout out because they're, you know, unfortunately, we went in this community and I used to to the high rate of homicides. Unfortunately, we have had them, but whatever reason, it happened, and our police department had done a phenomenal job during this investigation. Especially the one, the young man, not the young man, the toddler who passed away, our detectives did a phenomenal job. Being come from that world, and I know what it takes to apprehend suspect and for them to be able to get this guy and arrest him and get justice for this young man. And get justice for this young man. So it's a great job. And shout out to our D P W over the last couple of weeks, we've had um possible snow, but they were out there. Hear them coming around and they're out there working. Great job. Um February seventh, our police youth coalition is going to Albany. They're taking a couple of uh young leaders and they're gonna go meet with the state representatives. Whether it's the assemblymen or the uh senators. It's a good experience for them and they'll be going up there, they'll be spending the day. Thank you for um the city of Midtown to provide the transportation. Um they'll be going over there. One last thing. So. Christmas Day. I got a call in the middle of the day that there was an incident where. Orange Rock was turning off the power, um the electric and the gas to uh a building in our community. And it was like, okay, we're gonna have twenty families in this cold weather outside. Not to, you know, go much into detail. We were able to get the owners of the facility of the building, come in, get them rooms. But we had to wait. So we brought everybody down to. The community center where they can be warm. We had kids, we have kids, you know, even uh I think we had like a six month old and a three month old. And we kept them warm. And we needed to feed them. I thought we need to feed them. And it's Christmas Day. Everything's closed. It's like five o'clock. So um my staff was able to work and. Where do we go? Where do you go to get food when everything is closed? The only place that was open was Domino's. And they don't want to be recognized, but I thought it's that um they'd be recognized. Cause we went right in there to talk to them. And the first word, our the manager, what do you need? That is what we need in our community. This is why it's important for not just the big business, the small business to be recognized, because they're here for us. And they don't want to be recognized. The young man doesn't want to be recognized, but I think. He should be because the first thing was, what do you need? He was able to provide us some um heat supplies till we could feed these people and we happened to have some um drinks over there already and we fed them. And they went on their way and to this day I can tell you everything worked out, everything was fixed, I'm trying to put it back on and we're good to go. But that's. You know, what's important in the community. So with that, um. But I'll have repeating everything my councilman said. Uh, thank you. And now we'll go um. Town clerk, uh that the town clerk there, Mercedes.
Yes, I just want to uh let you know that we're gonna have an open calendar as of work for for civilian events. So no, it's not something that is very popular. So starting the first of uh March, we're open for this. I'm on a personal note from our town clerk, uh Louisa. I want to say thank you for your sympathy. Thank you for thinking of our family during these difficult times. Thank you so much for the analysis. Your words have been very kind, very much appreciated in these tough times. Thank you for sharing in the celebration of your Ingracia and thank you for the stories and memory everyone has shared. It's an amazing thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have um police chief.
Thank you, I'm.
Thank you, Supervisor. So just echo the sentiments of everyone for the Ingracia family. Terrible loss for our community, terrible loss for friends of ours, and they ran on both sides going forward. Supervisor mentioned we're looking to expand the junior police academy. We ran out of program again last year for the first time in many years. It was three one week sessions and there was such an overwhelming demand. That we're looking to expand it this year. So we have me coming up, school district, as in um it's gonna be my Hagen Middle School this year. We're working with the superintendent's office and the principal's office. To ensure we can have adequate time and space in the school to expand it to four one week programs this year. Once again, because of overwhelming demand. As Councilman Valentin had mentioned, four recruits will be graduating the academy early next month. They'll go into the field training program. About three months, three to four months. Um and then they'll be fully able to perform patrol in the realm. So we welcome them, including Charles Canada. Jacqueline Dugan, Heather Dugan, Danny, excuse me, and James Jacoba. The first group of applicants, um. Two females, one African American. We're always striving to put diversity in our department. Obviously, we're bound by civil service rules. So we have to work off a list. We're going through a hiring process now. Once again, we're bound by um hiring applicants off the list. That's a fair process in New York State. That's the one we follow. But this was a great group of diverse applicants and we were focused on welcoming them. Like the welcome Walter Bucky and Mason Alessio, you know, the dispatchers and the town board are aware of this. They're a critical component of our department. This is the first people that citizens interact with when they call, they come into the police department. And have every confidence that Mason and Walter are gonna be a great success uh back, going back to its full time positions in the department and we welcome you. At full confidence, it's gonna be a great success. Congratulations Supervisor Serano on your accomplishments uh the first year in office, great article, good paper. And you clearly pointed out all the great work you are doing here with the town board. Our January fourteen, on January fourteen, we hosted an event at Circleville Park. It it was supposed to involve Big Jay, um you know, from the Harlem Wizard and four of his teammates for a demonstration. Part of it was gonna be a forum for a full club basketball team, but apparently um. Big Jay and his colleagues canceled. I heard they canceled when they found out from our side, the four on our side of the team is gonna be supervisor Serano, Councilman Coin. You know, Meyer and Mary Cocken. Um and as soon as they heard that, Big Jay and his colleagues canceled. So they're coming back. I got good news. I'll let you know the date coming up at some time in February. But we look forward to uh putting on that event after all next month. And just to conclude on this, during twenty twenty two, Supervisor mentioned, we did face some significant challenges. You have to respect a very violent and brutal crime, especially involving the murder of a three year old. And I credit the whole entire staff of the department next door, from the dispatchers to the civilian staff, to the police officers, the investigators and supervisors. But also credit the town board and the supervisors. Um, you know, during these investigations, which are very complex and involve multiple agencies at the state, federal level. We had the unwavering support of the supervisor and town board as as we were progressing through these investigations. And sometimes. They were moving rather slow, but we have to do things according to the law, right? We have to respect people's rights. Suspect's rights, citizens' rights, and and follow um very specific guidelines when it comes to criminal investigations to ensure everyone's rights are protected. But all the investigations were led to successful conclusions and arrests, which are currently being prosecuted by the district attorney's office. So once again, thank you to supervisor and town board during this very difficult, challenging year in twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we got public participation. We can step up, stage lane, got three minutes. All of the audience.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Hit the button, is it green light?
Good evening.
Oh, perfect. There you go.
Uh Jake Baggs, Stage Road. Um Walco is still allowing my neighbor to violate town laws, so I'm back here tonight. Mark Ford Stables is being sued for over two hundred and twenty million dollars by E P A. Highway supervisor Mike Palm accepted at least five Walco employees working for it while illegal debris was being buried on Ford's property, Chairman Walco. After I spoke at July's board meeting, a couple of councilmen and jerks around confirmed with planning board, Chairman Gary Lake, that no site plan allows McCary's landscaping to continue operating on Ford's lot. George said he would take care of this immediately, um but building inspector Al Vance says town supervisors are tying his hands and preventing him from enforcing the law. Walco inspectors and supervisors falsified reports and allowed illegal work to continue in Ford's lots for years. All Walco and McCary's were including Walco staff, one hand washing the other there. Walco taxpayers helped lay the groundwork to turn two local forest farms into illegal landfills. Slaughter Road used to be a narrow gravel road with a low clearance string bridge. Walco removed the bridge and widened the road just before the start of the landfill operations. Walco debris from this roadwork was buried on Mark Ford's property. Thousands of trucks then dumped debris in the wetlands, floodplains, and streams right next to the edge of Slaughter Road. If Walco didn't make road improvements, the heavy trucks would not have been able to use that accessway or dump as many materials as they did. No permits allowed even one truck to dump on site, let alone fifty thousand that came from the local interchange and more trucks carrying construction debris from New York City. Heavy landfill trucks destroyed the gravel road. After the dumping was completed on lot number one, Walco repaired and paved Slaughter Road. There are no other businesses or residents on Slaughter Road other than Ford Stables, so only they benefit from this. As the Slaughter Road landfill was filling up, Mark Ford purchased a second lot on Stonyport Road in front of my house. Within six weeks of purchase, Walco reviewed the process of providing infrastructure for the second landfill operation. They assisted Ford in installing an illegal access road on his property, which McCary's operations still uses to this day. Walco provided drains and culverts to Mark Ford on Stonyport Road, enabling illegal debris buried right up at the very edge of the road. Stonyport residents had permanent well damages that occurred at that time. Thirty one acres of illegal debris was buried on the second landfill in front of my house because D C stepped in. And as you all know, the well tests showed there's toxic materials that are still on site that needed to be removed. Walco claims they were unaware of the filling operations, but the board here has documentation showing Daniel Leview, Mike Olling, and others. Were aware of the New York City debris being dumped overnight as it was occurring, while at least five Walco staff worked to land on it. So tax ceremony was used to help establish two Walco landfills that are the basis of E P A's current two hundred and twenty million dollar lawsuit. Supervisors should be held accountable, everybody who knew. George, please address this issue and make me stop coming to these meetings to share Walco's wrongdoings. Address the permit verification request, that's huge. Um and allow Al Vance, the building inspector, to address where McCary's ongoing code violations. So I'm gonna come back. Basically, that's it. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Will, where are we? Where are we?
Oh, something I'll brief the board in executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Hi, Deborah Barnet, Eight Platte Road. Just want to keep the goat situation that's stored to me kind of active and everybody's mind. My neighbor goes into his house, gets there almost twenty four hours a day. He goes in with a shovel and a bucket shovel, sorry, shit out of his house. Just want to keep that active. And.
Thank you.
Will, do you want to comment on that? We had discussions.
Um without going into too much of the detail, there is a proceeding. Pending with a uh with a state agency regarding this. And the town has asked for information from the property owner. Uh which has not been forthcoming. So the building department uh is going to be issuing uh a new appearance ticket for the property owners. Uh with violations of the uh town zoning code and the building code. So there there'll be a a notice to appear in court locally. While the other proceeding is going on. There will be a notice to appear in court on the code violations.
Is that also with the federal one?
No, this is not. Well, there's, there is, there is a proceeding going on uh in that regard.
Okay.
That I can't comment on.
I. I don't even comment on it, but you know, for the public's interest, especially the residents. So how close are we to. Causing the removal of this animal from the residence?
That's not something that I can answer right now based on what's the proceedings that are going on and the town court proceeding that's going to be filed here.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone else in the audience? Motion to adjourn.